To order with a roll call please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Councilmembers Ratty, absent. Councilmember Lawson, Smith, Bybee, Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams, and City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We've got a lot of room up here today if anybody wants to come up and join us. Okay, if everybody will stand for our invocation speaker Pastor Omar Palmer from the Sparks Seventh-day Adventist Church. Thanks for coming today Omar, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Let us pray. Father God in heaven, we thank you so much for your love, your mercies, your grace, and your goodness. As we meet today to transact business matters relating to the people of Sparks, we pray for your input, for your guidance, and your direction. We believe and trust oh God that your hands will be upon those who will make all these important decisions. I know they're for the decision's sake but also bless their families. Sometimes they have to be away for long hours. They have to go through long ordeals. And so we ask that you will continue to bless them and strengthen them. Give them resolve. Give them vision lest we perish. Father, we pray for those who are in attendance today, that they will also, all of their steps and their words, their comments, their actions, will be reflective of your love, your compassion, and your mercy towards us. We commit everything in your hands Lord, and we just pray for those who are not present here physically, that you will bless them in their endeavors. And we ask that they will be at peace with the fact that they're doing a very good job. Please take over, take control, and let your will be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Adams would you lead us today? Please join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open up for public comment. I have one card. Anybody wishing to speak today? Come on down, fill out a card, we'll get you on the dais. William Stewart, welcome. Just, I can't see if it's on or not. You might have to use this one here. I think they're having problems with that.
Good afternoon for the record, William T. Stewart. Elected officials, I just want to take my three minutes and talk to you briefly about the REMZA and ILS and ALS in our city of Sparks. Just wanted to find out where things are standing, if we could find out more about that. News through Grapevine, trying to find out if they are downgrading their services providing care to our residents, not only in the city but in the county as well. Something that affects me and my family tremendously. And also the regionalization of the talk of what's going on throughout the city and the county and so forth. So, just wanted to bring those to your attention. Sorry, Mr. Mayor's not here as well. I just thank you for your time and what you're doing for the city. God bless, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, would you make sure somebody gets ahold of him on that? I'm not aware of those rumors, but we're always the last ones to know anyway. Here's a card. Sir, did you want to speak also?
Yes.
You can fill that out afterwards.
I have a working pen.
Come on down.
My name is Matt Peterson. I've never addressed you before. As I said, here.
Yes. Use this microphone right here.
All right. I'm Matt Peterson. I own several rental units here in the city. And I've been looking around at what's going on in the city, particularly the, you know, D Street, older part of town. And I looked at several lots and was considering building, buying the lots, building a couple of fourplexes. And in going to the city and looking at the different fees and things, it would make it cost prohibitive for me to build those units considering the level of rents I would receive in that area. And I guess I would propose that the city consider a redevelopment district where the fees could be reduced to make projects pencil out, say. Because if something like that isn't done, the city's going to look like it looks and stay like it stayed for, you know, forever. Because if there are fees in the way of making a project reasonable to do, it's not going to get done, it's going to stay how it is.
Thank you. Have you talked to planning yet?
I was just there and they're the ones to send me over here to share my comments.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sure. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring her back to the council. Number five, approval of the agenda. We do have to pull 9.1 today. Any other requests or changes? Looking for motion? Ed?
I move to approve the agenda minus 9.1 as presented.
Charlene?
Second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three to nothing, thank you. Announcements and presentations. Julie, are you on the phone?
Two minutes first.
Okay. Okay, minutes. Consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of December 14th, 2015. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes as presented in 6.1.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, presentation of Hometown Christmas Parade 2015 winners. Francine? You leave right when you're up.
I have a photographer coming, so I just wonder if you have a message to put?
You want to put this off one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to 7.2, the presentation of Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. Come on down. Hi.
Hello.
Good, thank you.
My name is Kristy Chakrolin, I'm the Executive Director of Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. And I am excited to be here today to share with you an overall update of what we've done for the city of Sparks in the past year. For those of you who aren't familiar with Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful, we've been around since 1989. We're a small, local nonprofit, and our focus is beautification, education, advocacy, and cleanups.
You have the switch marks.
Beautification, education, advocacy, and cleanups is our focus. So, in this past year, and we're also the local affiliate for Keep America Beautiful. Keep America Beautiful is of course a national organization. They have close to 300 affiliates across the nation. And Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful is the local affiliate for this area. And it's, I have to say, it's kind of unusual to have a nonprofit be the affiliate for Keep America Beautiful. Usually it's a public works department or something like that. So, we're excited to be a private nonprofit. We think it makes our community stronger. So, in the past year, we have done many, many projects for the city of Sparks. We have, in total, we have engaged over $2,000 or $3,000, $5,000 dollars of in-kind support for city of Sparks through beautification projects and cleanups. And that includes more than 2,300 hours of volunteer service. We've removed 92 tires, 77,000 pounds of invasive weeds, and more than 30,000 pounds of waste. And we've done that through various programs. One of our big focuses of course is education. We really want to work on the prevention of meaning to do cleanups where our goal is to put ourselves out of business. And Waste Warriors, which many of you may be familiar with, was expanded this past year to include Weed Warriors and Watershed Warriors. So, we have programs within the schools that fix next generation science standards and STEM criteria that educate youth about the importance of reducing their waste, getting rid of invasive weeds, and the importance of the river for our community. Because the river of course is our water supply, and we really try to communicate that to the kids. Christmas Tree Recycling is the most recent project that we completed for the city of Sparks. Last year, we collected over 28,000 trees. This year, this last year, we got over 3,000, so that's kind of exciting, we got more trees than ever before. And of course, by doing the Christmas Tree Recycling program, that allows us to make sure that those trees aren't going to be dumped in open space areas or lie around in people's yards and be fire hazards. So, we're excited about the partnership we have with the Trucking Meadows Fire Protection District in helping to advance and promote this project. This past year, we actually expanded it from three sites to nine, so that was very exciting. Also, this past year, we expanded our Adopt a Spot program to include Adopt a River and Adopt in Open Space sites. We have eight Adopt a River sites available for adoption along the river in the city of Sparks. And we have 28 miles of roadway that are adopted within the city of Sparks through our Adopt a Spot program. The Great Community Cleanup is one of my favorite projects, but the river is what I'd like to mostly focus on. We had over 300 volunteers this past year cleaning up river sites within the city of Sparks, and they removed 25 tons of trash and over 1,700 bags of weeds. So, you know, it's amazing what you can do when you've got a small group of passionate people together. And as many of you know, we're also initiating the One River Initiative. We're in partnership with the Nevada Land Trust to help us create a better management plan for our river. There's a lot of really good organizations doing a lot of good things along the river, but none of them are really coordinating efforts. And so, we have a core group with your very own Kathy Cluett, who's helping us advance the purpose of developing a plan that will help manage all these different efforts so that we can make sure that the funding that is available for the river is going for those projects that are most in need. So, that's just a very quick overview of some of the things that we do for Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful with your support, and we thank you. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Just as, an update to the council, during your normal budget process, there is money allocated to this organization, and one of the things that you've asked them to do is to come and report. And then you've provided me the authority, based on our approved budget, to give them their allocation. That process has taken place. And so, in the budget for '15-'16 was a $10,000 budget allocation to support this organization, and I believe that's been fully transpired at this point.
And deposited, thank you.
Yes, so.
That's always the good part.
Yes, thank you.
Listen, you guys do great work. I've been on a few of those cleanups, but you don't do that in just one day or one weekend, do you? Is this several times out?
Yeah, we do a variety of cleanups throughout the year. And one of the things we really have been working to do is empowering local residents to do cleanups in their communities, which actually we've been able to establish through the partnership with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. There are picker kits available in local libraries where you, people can organize their own cleanups by going out and getting those picker kits. And we can provide, you know, support if need be, but we just really want to empower residents to help keep their community clean.
Good job, good job. You know, being on the RTC, we're doing the Southeast Connector in Veterans Park area right now.
Yes.
And it's going right through the pristine areas of the golf course out there.
Yes.
Over 140 tons of trash come out of there so far.
Isn't that crazy?
It's crazy. I don't know how it gets there.
Wind.
In the middle of the night.
Yeah.
No, not the, these tires aren't being blown around.
Oh, my gosh.
Refrigerators and everything else, so. It's just amazing how much is out there, and you know, it's really appreciated what you guys do.
Yeah, well, again, we want to highlight also the 329 Dump Hotline, another partnership we have with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. If people see someone going in the wrong direction with a pile of trash in the back of their pickup truck, going up in the hills, please call 329 Dump. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office will make sure that someone goes out there to cite them.
Thank you. Ms. Bybee?
I applaud what your group is doing to try to improve our community, and I think the answer is really being a community, it's a community-wide concern and that everybody in the community can involve, be involved, from kids to people retired, to help clean up the community. You had talked about, I know you're looking at some events along the river, do you want to share kind of thoughts? It's nothing concrete yet, but I was really excited to kind of, the thought of doing a walk or planned events maybe within the next six, eight months.
Yeah, so as a part of the Trucking River Management Plan, one of the things we've identified is local residents are not as engaged with our river as they could be. And so, I know Councilman Lawson had an idea about doing a fun run or something like that, and we're working with the City of Reno to see if we can get something set up. I know Councilman Bob's again with City of Reno, he said, okay, let's do another fun run, but let's not do it in Idahwild. So, we're thinking of doing it along other areas that people may not necessarily visit that are absolutely beautiful, and a lot of those areas are here in Sparks. So, we haven't put anything together yet, but that's all a part of the Trucking River Management Plan. We really want to get people down there along the river to enjoy how beautiful it is.
Thank you so much. Groups like yours are very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ratty, are you here now?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to 7.1. Francine, presentation of Hometown Christmas Parade 2015 winners.
Yeah, I'll just jump right in and start handing out awards. I thought we could do photos?
Sure.
If we want to stand and?
Sure. Do them all at one time, or?
We'll just do them one at a time.
Okay.
Summit Christian Church, yes?
So, yeah. Okay, let's go.
Okay. We're going to have to put those back there, so. Put them in the middle?
Good job.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Are we in close enough?
Thank you.
Do you want to hand it off, or just?
Thank you.
Spanish Springs, Washoe, rodeo club? Girl Scouts Museum? So, Girl Scouts of the Sierra, they won for best costume group, and Summit Christian Church won for best vehicle. Girl Scouts are always the best dressed in the parade. Or the most fun, the most fun. Okay, ready? I'm going to take at least two, just in case somebody's thinking.
Thank you.
Spark Heritage Museum, won for best float. Yeah. Congratulations. You were my best.
Very quickly, I wanted to acknowledge our sponsor, Granite Construction, because they build it. Thank you very much.
Best merch being as the envision group? Best marching? Is that what was that?
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I guess we'll put in dead center.
Rosy. Don't worry between the roses. Thank you.
DMS toe? They won the best business? No, she made me tell by myself. Thank you guys. Thank you. Yours are right, you know. I know. Depending. Yeah. Thank you. Best community group is Amplified Entertainment?
How are you? Good to see you. Good to see you too.
Congratulations. Last one. Then I'm going to take my other phone. There we go, thanks.
Thank you guys.
All right, best, okay. And then the best overall goes to Thompson Garage Door.
Gino calls us the Ditto Awards, so.
All right. Oh, no, no, as long as you're making them stay there, I'll.
Thank you.
I'm going to say congratulations to our winners, and I just want to thank the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers we put on and the thousands of people that come and heat in the parades. It's a great event, and we're very pleased to have it.
Francine, how many entrants do we have this year?
We have right around 100.
It was beautiful. It's, if you leave early, you can drive down the streets and see them all getting ready to join the parade, because it's a huge, huge group, and it's always done so well. One of our best events, I would say. Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, let's go to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.9 as presented.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
And that was an aye from Ms. Ratty, so the passage unanimously, thank you. Moving on to general business, 9.1 we pulled, 9.2, consideration and possible acceptance of a grant from the Neil J. Redfield Foundation in the amount of $45,000. Welcome. I know she hasn't been here.
Oh, hi, thank you very much.
Were you the last one in the office, and they said you're coming to the meeting? Is that what it was?
Am I the lucky one?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. This is, I'm here to ask you to consider receiving this funding from the Neil J. Redfield Foundation. It's funding that supports our programs every year. Leisure Without Limits is one of the major programs it supports, which is programs for people with disabilities. We go back to these guys year after year, and they've continued to support us every year since 2010. So, I want to recognize them for that, and that's pretty unusual, and I want to make sure that you guys know how much we really appreciate their funding. Unless you have any questions, I'd like to ask if you could approve this.
Any questions? Comments?
That's a tough decision.
I know. Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to move that we are receiving a $45,000 from the Neil J. Redfield Foundation.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? I'll just say, you get this every year for quite a while now, and it really helps you guys.
Very much so.
It's really appreciated.
Since 2010.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Aye.
It's an aye? Passage Nancy, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If I might just, at the pleasure of the chair, just a little comment about this. The foundations that we're working with, similar to the Redfields Foundation, typically work on things that are kind of a one-time nature. So, for them to have supported us for a long period of time, there's two things going on here. One is that we have a very quality program for which they recognize, and because of the quality of the program that we do, their willingness to help that program survive year after year is one of the greatest things that we have. And it's basically the staff and working with the community to make that go. So, I just wanted to make sure that we understand that these are typically one-and-dones, and for us to have done this for so many years is a great tribute to our staff.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we're going to 9.3. Dan, come on down. It's consideration of possible approvals to negotiate an agreement with Trucking Meadows Water Authority and to accept a grant in the amount of $99,835.40. How you doing, Dan?
Wrong.
Oh, that's Ron. Ron Corman, I'm sorry, Ron.
That's all right.
I'll call you when, as long as you answer.
I'll answer.
I apologize.
Paul called him wrong.
You told me he was gone, and I realized who I was talking to.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp, Council, Ron Corman, Public Works Manager, for the record. What I have before you today is a turf reduction plan for which we were approached by Trucking Meadows Water Authority last fall to look at doing some turf reductions for water savings. And I have a presentation here. I'm kind of going to go through a little bit of detail at the beginning, and then I'm going to kind of blow through it pretty fast, because it's kind of lengthy, covers all the different areas in the city that we're looking at doing some turf reduction. And then if you have any questions, or if something pops up in the middle that you have a question about, by all means, stop me, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. So, what is this about? Maintenance Division looking at reducing turf. We had been looking at this before. We were approached by Tomwa, we were looking at little places. We had some places where literally, you know, 30 square feet of turf, and we're having to send somebody over there with a mower and fix irrigation and stuff like that. And so, we really weren't getting, you know, very good value for the amount of investment into the maintenance of it. So, we were looking at, you know, just looking at saving labor costs and that kind of thing. And then, of course, with the drought, you know, obviously saving some water here and there became a big, important issue. So, most of the following turf areas that I'm outlining through this program have little to no park area value, they're just, you know, green strips along the way, and are labor-intensive to maintain in the fact that, again, it's a small piece of ground, you still have to go there, unload, mow it, take care of the irrigation. Most of the turf that's removed will be replaced with xeriscaping, DG, trees, shrubs, that kind of thing where it's applicable. And we're looking at a couple of possibilities at a couple of locations of putting in some small dog park facilities. So, we have not identified all of those at this time, but it's something that we're looking at with a growing request from the community for areas for people to be able to take their dogs and let them off the leash and run around and play. All of the following areas that we're designating are areas that are irrigated with domestic water, so we're not looking at any places where we're currently using FMS. So, why now? Well, obviously, the drought situation, and also, we were approached by Tomwa, and the end result is the offer of $99,835.40 to help us pay for the materials. This is an in-kind grant, and we are reciprocating with our labor and equipment. So, basically, we'll do the work, and we'll be able to use their money to purchase the materials, the DG, the shrubs, the whatever might end up going back in to sort of create a finished look. Obviously, we're in a drought, Sparks needs to do its part for the community, and it's a good opportunity right now with the drought to get some citizen buy-in. And we are adding some more park space out north, and so we need to be able to reallocate some of our labor to be able to maintain some of that more open park space. So, this is an example here, McCarran and Prater Landscaping, 701 East Prater Way. It's not a park setting, it's ornamental turf, the water savings, we're looking at removing about 16,271 square feet, and then replace it with xeriscaping. And then it goes in to talk about eliminating approximately 80% of the water use from that meter. And that is the area, an overhead shot, that's McCarran and Prater, that part there on the corner. So, basically, what you see in the green and in the following pictures as they come up, it'd be replacing what you see in the green with some sort of a xeriscaping. Next one is at the Police Department, we're looking at a couple of areas over there. And again, highlighted in the green, those would be the areas that we'd be looking at removing the turf and doing something else with. Fire Station 4 over on Disc Drive, we're just looking at those small little areas of turf that are right around the fire department building, not that stuff that's over to the west of there, that's kind of that detention basin. The Rec Center, in the bottom of that picture, you see two little areas that are circled. Those are the, a little thin strip of grass that runs right next to the sidewalk. The green turf that is on the east side or on the right-hand side of the picture there is all ready, been removed for xeriscaping, and then there's a little part that's right in front of the rec gym building that we would be looking at removing the turf from there and probably replacing that with sort of an AstroTurf type of thing that can be tramped on but still have color. Sparks needs to do his part for the community, and it's a good opportunity right now with the drought to get some citizen buy-in. And we are adding some more park space out north, and so we need to be able to reallocate some of our labor to be able to maintain some of that more open park space. So this is an example here, McCarran and Prater Landscaping, seven oh one East Prater Way. It's not a park setting. It's ornamental turf, the water savings. We're looking at removing about sixteen thousand, two-hundred-seventy-one square feet and then replace it with zero-scaping. And then it goes in to talk about eliminating approximately eighty percent of the water use from that meter. And that is the area, an overhead shot. That's McCarran and Prater, that part there on the corner. So basically, what you see in the green and in the following pictures as they come up, it'd be replacing what you see in the green with some sort of a zero-scaping. Next one is at the Police Department. We're looking at a couple of areas over there. And again, highlighted in the green, those would be the areas that we'd be looking at removing the turf and doing something else with. Fire Station Four over on Disk Drive, we're just looking at those small, little areas of turf that are right around the fire department building, not that stuff that's over to the west of there. That's kind of that detention basin. The Rec Center, in the bottom of that picture, you see two little areas that are circled. Those are the, a little thin strip of grass that runs right next to the sidewalk. The green turf that is on the east side or on the right-hand side of the picture there is all ready, been removed for zero-scaping, and then there's a little part that's right in front of the rec gym building that we would be looking at removing the turf from there and probably replacing that with sort of an AstroTurf type of thing that can be tramped on but still have color. And then, of course, the green in the back is just open, you know, big park space. Next one, Victorian Circle Plaza. We're looking at the road that runs around behind the back of the theater, and on the backside of that, there's a little thin strip, about foot and a half wide or so, that runs along the side of the sidewalk. So we're looking at pulling that out and replacing that with some DG and maybe some bushes. You can see they're just little teeny pieces that go all the way around the back. Next is over at Fisherman's Park, that long strip of grass there that the geese and the day labors usually stand on. So we're going to look at removing that piece, and then that little piece down by the bridge. Seven-Eleven, the turf on Bering Boulevard, we're looking to remove the turf there and put in DG. And we're also looking at a possibility, if we can, because there's some questions about this piece of property, but we'd like to possibly enter into an agreement with the folks that have the animal clinic there and see if they'd want to take that over the maintenance of that property. Fifteenth and C Street, there, those areas there in green that are outlined with a red pen, basically, we've been taking care of somebody's front yard for years, and so we think that it would be appropriate that we remove the turf or figure out a way to get maybe them to take care of their own front yard. At the theater, there's in the upper right-hand corner of the picture there, there's one little teeny area that you can see that is outlined with red pen that has turf in it. We're looking to remove that little piece of turf. And the biggest reason for it is the irrigation in that corner is a problem. Fire Station down on Victorian Avenue, they have little strips of turf between the street and their parking lot, so we're looking to remove those. Out at Del Cobre Park, the area that is in the shadow there that's in the, with the hash marks, we're looking at, this park has issues with the sidewalk, and so we're looking at a CIP project for next fiscal year where we'll be coming in and removing some sidewalk. And what we're looking at doing is ending up with the sidewalk kind of being the inside border on that hatched area, and then that hatched area would be either returned to a DG or a more natural setting, or this is one location where we're looking at a potential for putting in some fencing and having a dog park area. Alf Sorenson Community Center, those two pieces of grass have some pretty big trees on them, and pine trees, and the grass does not grow very well, but we sure throw a lot of water at it to try and keep it green, and we think it would make more sense just to let those go to more of a natural kind of a setting. Red Hawk Park, again, this is one area where we can remove a little bit without affecting very much of the park space itself, and another potential area for a dog type of a setting. Rose Garden Park, in this picture, it looks like that's a big space, but in actuality, that's, they're pretty narrow little strips of grass, and what we think we'd like to see there is have this be more of a rose garden park and a walk-through and not a turf area. And this is another area that we'd like to see if the HOA would be interested in possibly taking this over. And then City Hall, we have three separate program, projects that we're looking at, depending on plans for future expansion, but one of, of course, Long Prater Way there. And then there is, would be one project, and then another project would be right out in front of City Hall, between City Hall and the parking lot. And then the other one on the south side is removing some of the turf over there. Any questions?
Thanks, Ron. Questions? Comments? Mr. Lawson?
Did we investigate what the fencing would cost for the dog parks?
We have not yet at this point.
Because I think that's a great idea. It seems like we have a real need for some dog areas, but all the rest of it looks good.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering why they wouldn't give you the extra sixty-four dollars and sixty cents to make it a hundred thousand?
It actually, it came out as we had a limit of a hundred thousand dollars, basically, and so it was a justification based on acreage, and it came down to calculating out what we estimated our cost would be for both irrigation supplies, for DG, and for bushes, shrubs, trees, whatever we ended up putting back in, and we came up with a number of approximately fifty cents a square foot. And so just, it's simple math, and that's what it came out to.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. On the, removing the turf, I would say, is timely, obviously, with, although we've had a better winter now, I think, just for the future, and I get more letters and comments from people, people wondering why there's so much grass out in front of Safeway, areas that have effluent that people don't know it's effluent. But anytime, you know, I've had numerous comments from citizens concerned about why we have grass, so much grass, when they're asked, being asked to, you know, when we're asked personally to remove our grass or to cut back on it. So I think for, you know, the cost savings, but the aesthetics, you know, of doing the kind of zero-scaping, I think is going to result in much improvement on all of these areas you talked about. And I fully support the dog park issue. I've had, again, a number of people contacting, emailing me that are really looking for dog parks and sparks, and so I applaud you on that. I think that's a good move that we can have a couple of those open, you know, in the near future, residents are asking for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Dog parks, getting it a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Hey, Ron, this is Julia.
Julia.
Aye. Yeah, can I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. So I am absolutely a hundred percent in support of moving forward on this and definitely will be voting to support it, but I did want to make one, one comment, which is the upside is less turf and less maintenance and less water, but I do think that there is a potential downside with zero-scaping in that we haven't been able to keep up with the maintenance of trash and weeds that collect in some of the zero-scape portions in the city. And certainly during the recession, we had to de-prioritize weeds and trash pickup. So I just did want to get it on the record that that is a concern moving forward, that as we're prioritizing maintenance in some of these small strips, that I'm hoping that, you know, as budgets rebuild and as we're looking at how we allocate our resources, that's the other complaint that I get quite a bit from citizens is the weeds and the trash in some of our public spaces, particularly where they get caught in the bushes and things around there, and where the weeds come up through the DG. So just want to put that on the record. That said, a hundred percent in support, and just want to make sure we're keeping an eye on that maintenance issue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion? Anybody? Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to move that we accept the Truckee Meadows Water Authority grant in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, eight-hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Nine point four, consideration, discussion, and possible approval appointment as an alternate to the Regional Planning and Governing Board for a three-year term. I think this thing is fixed, but go ahead, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you. On behalf of the discussion, you've already mentioned that these are three-year terms and that there are different members of the council that are eligible to be considered, and at this time, we're looking for confirmation of Mr. Smith to be the alternate that would run. His term had run from January thirtieth this year, when his current term expires, until January thirtieth of 2019.
Okay, any questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the appointment of Ron Smith as alternate to the Regional Planning Governing Board for a three-year term.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
You have to get reelected, though.
Yeah, I know. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know about that.
I'd say, you still got to be here.
Okay. Okay, my name shows up in the next one, too. Nine point five, discussion and possible action changing the city's alternate member to the Western Nevada Development District Committee from Ron Smith to Ron Schmidt. Mr. Driscoll?
The title kind of says it all. Just a couple of background pieces. The Western Nevada Development District is a nine-county economic development authority. Mr. Lawson currently sits as the chair, and this body deals with this when it deals with boards and commissions. And during the last board and commission selection process, Mr. Smith's name was the one that was as the alternate.
Inadvertently.
However, Mr. Schmidt is actually been the person who's been attending on behalf of the city, and based on some internal discussions, staff was just looking to officially change the record so that Mr. Schmidt is the sitting alternate versus Mr. Smith.
Okay. Any discussion? Comments? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to appoint Councilmember Schmidt to serve as the city's alternate member of the Western Nevada Development District Committee.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, nine point six, consideration of and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of reappearance of James Fiewins and the appointment of Diane Vanderwell to the Sparks Planning Commission. Are you going to do this, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, I am.
I think Mr. Cruz was a little premature.
Okay, there we go then.
Okay. I know.
We're going to work on Remydo math. We'll be okay.
It's okay.
It's all good. We'll train that. One of your boards and commissions is planning, and those folks that are there, they have different terms, and then there are term limits and export, and this is a case where Mr. Fenwick, Fenwens, is available for a renewal, and he could serve again. However, Mr. Nowicki had termed out, and so therefore, we're looking for someone to replace his position, and it's the suggestion that Diane Vanderwell be that replacement. So it's up for your action.
Okay. Any questions, comments? This is the mayor's request?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to move that we approve the mayor's recommendation for reappearance of James Fiewins and Diane Vanderwell to the Sparks Planning Commission.
Okay. Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry. Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
And we have Ms. Vanderwell here. Diane is here.
Diane? You're here? Stand up. Thank you for doing this. This is great.
Thank you very much.
I think we really do appreciate it. It's a, it's a.
You're in it for the money, right?
That's right.
Of course, I am.
And your reading, your soft reading that you're going to be able to handle right now, yeah. Thank you so much.
There is no money associated with it.
Yeah. We all know that, I think. Okay, nine point seven. That was passing unanimously. Mine was a yes, but I didn't give you. Okay, nine point seven, you're up, Neil.
I'm excited.
Consideration and possible approval of reapportionment of assessments levied under ordinance number two-three-nine-seven, local improvements district number three. Which would be the Legends?
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here. I don't get to make very many staff presentations anymore, so got a little, got a little excited and sat down too soon. For the record, Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager. By way of background, you know, the Legends Project grand opening was in 2008. The city participated heavily in the financing.
Hi, guys. It's Julia. I'm going to just interrupt for a second. I can just barely hear Neil. Can he get a little closer to the microphone?
Is that any better?
He's almost eating.
That is a little better, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, it's glued down. Okay, there we go. So by way of background, the Legends Project had its grand opening in 2008. The city was heavily involved in the financing package, largely to build the infrastructure that went into the center, as well as the pedestrian mall. One component of that financing package was a local improvement district whereby the roads, sewers, storm drains, and potable water system was constructed and paid for essentially by the, by the users out there. And initially, the development plan was analyzed by a licensed engineer who essentially assigned pro-rata shares of each amount of the impact that was going to come to those roads, sewers, storm drains, and water system based on the development plan at the time. As the development has changed over time, we've had it, we found it necessary to go in and reapportion those assessments so that they, they match up closely with, you know, with how the center is building out. Last summer, the folks from Red Development, who owned and operate Legends, brought us a series of parcel maps to convert an existing set of four parcels out there into thirteen to match their development plans as they go forward. You know, one of those are in, really in three areas across the project. The first one is in what was originally intended to be a JCPenney. It was going to be on the Sparks Boulevard frontage there, kind of behind where Fed Rutgers is now. It's just kind of a, an open, an open flat spot that actually gets used by hot August nights to park trailers during the summer. But they want to break that up into, into four different parcels to allow for, for development. Another area is on the west side of Target. They, you know, they want to put in a couple of additional inline tenants over there that'll split one parcel into two. And then the parcel of land that, in addition to a lot of the parking lot currently hosts Old Navy and Best Buy, you know, they want to set that up under its own parcel with its own parking, should there, there be a point in the future where, you know, that, that portion of the center might want to be sold off. So we brought back the engineer who had done the original work, asked him to reassess, you know, how much each of those parcels should be paying for said infrastructure that had previously been financed, and he came back with, with a set of recommendations. So before we allowed the developer to record the parcel maps out there, we wanted to get the council's blessing on the, on the prorated assessments as they go forward. So that's essentially what I'm doing here today, is with the draft copy of that, that engineer's report, it won't be filed until we have the actual parcel numbers that the assessor will assign after the maps have recorded. So there's a bit of a chicken and an egg thing going on here. But we felt, from a staff perspective, that it was important to get the reassessment report in front of you in draft form, gain your approval before we took the parcel maps down to record. So with that, I would be, would be happy to answer any questions. The draft report, as I think I mentioned it already, is, is attached to your staff report, so I'll, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Mr. Lawson has a comment, I believe.
I have a disclosure pursuant to Chapter two-eighty-one A of the Nevada Revised Statute. The agenda item concerns on the reapportionment of certain assessments levied as part of a local improvement district via the creation of additional parcels within the improvement districts. Although my company, Sierra Builders, has worked with Red Development in the past, the issue before council today is not specifically related to any project which we are associated or which we anticipate becoming involved with. And so as such, after consulting with our attorney, I will be voting on this item today.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Julia, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Seeing none, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve reapportionment number two to assessments levied under the ordinance twenty-three-ninety-seven, local improvement district number three, Legends at Sparks Marina.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing and action items, there are none. Planning and zoning public hearings and action items. Eleven point one, public hearing, consideration of and possible action on Bill Number twenty-seven-hundred to rezone a site approximately four-point-two-five acres in size from C one to C two, which is from neighborhood to general commercial, located at twenty-fifty Pyramid Way. Hello?
Members of the council, Ian Crittenen, Senior Planner, for the record. This is a request by Michael Martin to rezone, well, let me pull up the site, I'm sorry. To rezone the site that used to be Rayleigh's many years ago, it is now currently owned by Walmart. The zoning, as mentioned, currently is C one. Michael Martin is looking to develop this property and is looking for the C two zoning to allow for some additional uses that aren't available in C one. Staff reviewed this and, and went through the, the findings that we're required to Staff reviewed this and and went through the the findings that were required to look through as far as finding whether or not it's an appropriate zoning district there. The existing shopping center just to the south, which is the the Green Break Shopping Center, is currently C2, as is the Scolari Shopping Center across Pyramid Way is also zone C2. So staff felt that we could make those findings that it was an appropriate use. There are a lot of uses that change whether they go from, some are allowed through conditional use in C1 that are now allowed by Riot and so forth. I can go through those with you now. It's a little dry, but it gives you an idea what that that transition is. Would you?
No, I don't think it's necessary we read it.
Okay.
So basically, everything in C1 is authorized in C2, but there's things in C2 that are not authorized in C1.
Some transition, like I said, from conditional uses to just straight allowed in C2, some that aren't allowed at all in C1 through a conditional use or anything are then allowed in C2 typically through conditional use permits and and different things.
Okay, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the council. Would you like to to hear it?
No. We were briefed on it.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, we got the
I want to make sure you're available. So after after reviewing, you know, the the existing land use is currently general commercial, which allows both the C1 and C2 land, or zoning districts are both approved uses, so there was no need for change to the matched plan land use. After reviewing this and going through the findings, staff recommended recommends approval of this. That was the the recommendation for planning commission as well. I'm trying to think if there was anything else that I wanted to make sure I hit with you guys. The other surrounding land uses for this property, there are multifamily to the east across Richard's Place, I believe that is. And then directly to the north is SF6. So those are all existing land uses adjacent to C2, like I said, in those two other adjoining zoning districts. So we felt like it was an appropriate land use in the area or zoning in the area.
Mr. Lawson?
Has the application come in with a project yet?
We we have some some stuff submitted that hasn't come through yet because of timing issues. It hasn't hasn't got on an agenda yet. So there are there are some projects in the works, but but nothing that's officially worded.
I'm just wasn't sure, I mean, to me, the what I've heard, just rumor, sounds like a better use than what it was before. So the neighbors would be less affected in my mind.
Okay.
Since that sits in my ward, that's important.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments? Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve bill number 2700 to rezone a site of approximately 4.25 acres from C1 to C2 located at 2050 Pyramid Way.
Okay. I'm sorry, the public hearing will do that all.
Don't we have to have a public? Okay, thank you.
Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council now for your motion, which you just said.
I don't know if I can redo it.
You don't have to redo it.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This piece of property sat vacant for a long time, so hopefully this
Will we put the five D's in your motion?
Z1 through Z. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ann. Okay, 11.2, public hearing, consideration of and possible approval for Greenleaf Enterprises Incorporated to move a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility from an approved location at 380 South Rock Boulevard to a location at 1675 Crane Way. Karen?
Good afternoon, city council. I'm Karen Malby, senior planner. Before you today is a request from Greenleaf Enterprises to move a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility from approved location at 380 South Rock to 1675 Crane. This request is pursuant to the provisions of NRS 453A dot 350, which states that a medical marijuana establishment may apply to change location within the same local jurisdiction as its original approval. But a local jurisdiction government governmental body must approve this relocation through a public hearing. And that's what the request is today. In October of 2015, the city granted Greenleaf approval to relocate the proposed medical marijuana cultivation and production facility to 380 South Rock Boulevard. Greenleaf was originally approved by the city to establish a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility along with a dispensary at 1825 Freeport Boulevard in September of 2014. Greenleaf was unable to come to terms with the property owner at 380 South Rock, so the MME is going to is proposed to be relocated to 1675 Crane. In December of 2015, they did submit an application for administrative review and on January 6, 2016, that administrative review was approved with conditions. I attached as exhibit, I believe its attachment C was actually with administrative review letter with the condition. And one of the conditions on that was that they had to be approved in the public hearing This public hearing isn't fulfillment of the condition of approval. notice of the public hearing was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on January 12, 2016. Staff is recommending approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you Karen. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a public hearing.
It gets to every time.
Yeah.
I'll open it up, public hearing. What in the audience wishes to speak at this time? And then if you fill out a card when you're done, use this microphone.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Karen Ratty, representing the Apple. Finally have a project that will become real hopefully and have actually already submitted their tenant improvement permit. And we'll be meeting with staff shortly to have a preliminary plan review meeting just to make sure everything's set. So I'm available to answer any questions, but having a longtime local Sparks businessman at this location, I think will be a great benefit to the city of Sparks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Now we're looking for a motion.
Let me make another disclosure.
Okay.
So pursuant to Nevada chapter 281, Sierra Builders has done work for Greenleaf in the past. We don't anticipate doing any work for them in the future. And since neither myself nor my company benefits from this, I will be voting on this item.
Okay. Ms. Bybee?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the request from Greenleaf Enterprises, Inc. to relocate a medical marijuana cultivation and production facility from 380 South Rock Boulevard to 1675 Crane Way.
Okay, looking for a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, do we need a closed-door session today?
No, sir.
None? Okay. Comments from the public? Thanks Karen. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the city council and the city manager, Mr. Lawson?
I would like to ask staff to investigate annexing to the east for Sparks for some industrial type applications. Do you need more direction than that, Steve?
No, sir. I'm aware of the topic and that'll provide myself direction. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Steve Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I just wanted to remind the council and the public that there will be a concurrent meeting of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, Reno City Council, Sparks City Council on Monday, February 1st, starting at 8:30 a.m. That meeting will be held at the Reno City Council chambers. That is a change of venue from our normal meetings. So we'll be in the Reno Council chambers at 1 East First Street. The only topic of conversation that will be on that posted meeting is an update and discussion on the flood control project that the three entities are involved in. But it's important to remind ourselves it's a change of location. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, looking for a motion?
I do have a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Ratty.
I would just like to ask Ms. Bybee to do me the courtesy of chair in the next meeting.
Okay, just ask her about that too.
You got it.
Thank you. Okay, without objection, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting with a roll call.
Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini, absent. Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt, absent. Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, the agenda. I need an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Agency Member Lawson, approved by Agency Member Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. 5.1, consideration and approval of minutes of the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting from December 14, 2015. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Business items, 6.1. I have a report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period November 26, 2015 through January 6, 2016. Do I have a motion to move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so approved unanimously. Going to item seven on the agenda, comments. 7.1, do I have any comments from the public?[1744.62]